That quiet in there?
I am. The chair is gone again. Ah ha. Can you find out what's keeping up? Well, while they're fiddling around with everything, I'd like to welcome everybody here. Chair Huxley is not going to be here today. So if you have any public comment forms that you want to bring up, state whatever topic you are interested in. And we'll start by having the pledge, if you would stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I guess we can't really start until our TV's up and going, so.
Jessie.
He's our resident techie. It's up and going. Okay, we've got two items of business to take care of today. The investment of the road reserve funds. And so I'm going to turn it over to Debbie Crumley and you can tell us what's going on.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to bring to you investing in public funds. Probably in the last few years Doug and I have been talking about investing the road funds to diversify the funds, not just keeping them in one spot. And nothing's really happened until recently when Shannon Bell, Jackson County Treasurer contacted me and asked if she could bring some representatives from Piper Jaffray down just to talk to us and just inform us of what they could do. And so it was a really great meeting and Doug and I benefited quite a bit. And so we wanted to share with commissioners what they can do for us. And so Shannon Bell is the Jackson County Treasurer and then Nolan Farr is a Piper Jaffray representative and he will follow her. And I don't know if Doug wants to say anything later, but he can.
We're gonna drag, we're gonna drag him up here.
So thank you so much Shannon for coming over.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Good morning commissioners. I'm Shannon Bell, Finance Director and Treasurer for Jackson County, friendly neighbor over there to the east. So, oop, I'm going this way. So, the investment of public funds, we are governed by the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, it's a national organization. The best practice guide for investment of funds gives us four objectives. The first one being safety of funds. No treasurer ever wants to be on the front page of the paper for saying if they lost some public funds. And that's tar and feathering for sure. And so legality, you gotta be legal, conformance with federal, state and other legal requirements. Liquidity, you want to make sure that you can pay those bills when they come due. If the roads has a project, you need to make sure you can pay for that. Pay for your accounts payable on your payroll. Employees like to get paid. And the final objective is yield. You want to be able to obtain some return on your investments. So legality. We are governed by Oregon revised statute specifically for investments is ORS 294, which states that the government custodial officer may invest any sinking fund, bond fund, or surplus funds in the custody of the custodial officer in bank accounts, classes of securities at current market prices, insurance contracts, and other investments listed in this section, but only after obtaining from the governing body of the county, municipality, political subdivision, or school district a written order that has been entered into the minutes of the Journal of the Governing Body. So basically what that says is that the treasurer, whomever your treasurer, Debbie is your elected treasurer for the county, can invest outside of banks and LGIP with a written order from the Board of Commissioners. So the most common investments, you've got your US obligations, your Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, home loan banks, farm credit, et cetera. We're also allowed to go into municipalities, municipal debts of California, Idaho, and Washington, as long as they have a double A rating or equivalent. You can do time deposits and qualified depositories. Qualified depositories are maintained by the Oregon Department of Revenue, or the State Treasurer has a list of qualified depositories and you can put CDs with those organizations. And then you could have some corporate debt. They are required to have a rating when you settle of a P2 or A or better Moody's, and an A2 or A or better S and P. And you're limited to 35% debt in the entire portfolio. I keep wanting to go the other way. I'm sure you're all familiar with the LGIP. It's managed by the Oregon Treasurer. So all the municipalities put a little bit of money in there and then they have one big pool at the LGIP and then they invest that pool to get a rate that's been spread across the organizations that are participating in that. I don't know if any of you have actually gone online or looked at the portfolio of the LGIP. It's something I try to do regularly because it really is an investment that the county is in and it's the public funds of my county that are in this fund. So if you just take a look under the hood, they currently have about 47% corporates. While I'm allowed by law to do 35% corporates, so I'm investing in someone who's above that. Their corporates, some of their investments, Citigroup, it's a triple B rating, B of A is a triple A B rating. Anheuser-Busch, I don't think my commissioners would like it if I said, oh hey, I just invested a whole bu- you know, million dollars in Anheuser-Busch. That's my public funds going to work for you guys. They've got about 4% in certificates of deposit, concentrated Pacific Continental Bank. And then they've got these wonderful things called asset-backed securities, which is kind of a misnomer because you think of assets as a great thing, but asset-backed securities are actually a riskier investment. And they've got 11% there. And then some of those are, you know, CarMax owner trust notes, Discover Card, execution notes, Hyundai Auto Receivables. Kind of things that I, as a prudent investor for the county, wouldn't directly invest in. They've got about 2% in foreign government. And foreign government and foreign debt is 18%. So got 47% corporate securities and 18% in foreign debt as well. They've got some muni debt. And you know, I, as an investor in the state of Oregon Unlimited, California, Oregon, Washington, well, they've got some money in Florida State Hurricane Catastrophe Fund as well as the New York City Muni Water Fund. And then other, their other is 11% and that's where they've got their US Treasuries and some additional money into their, another fund that they have, which is their intermittent fund.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
On all of these entities that they've invested in, like Citigroup at the top, is that their main investment? And then B of A, the next main investment? Or was it just kind of a pick and choose there?
They've got quite a few investments. They have a lot in Citigroup actually. And B of A, and I can give you their whole portfolio. You can look online.
Well, to be honest, I'm concerned about Citigroup and B of A because of their high amount of derivatives, but.
Yeah. So, I mean, I kind of, my, my test for this is if I were going to invest directly, Jackson County funds, would I go to these entities? And I can say, if I went to my commissioners and said, hey, look at the portfolio today, this is what it is. I'm not sure that they're going to be too excited. But when you're investing in the LGIP, you're investing in a percentage of this as well.
Okay, so Citigroup would be the main one in that group? Okay, just checking.
So, safety. So there's liquidity or legality I talked about, then there's safety. So ORS again, that's what we're governed by, provides guidelines to minimize investment risk. The LGIP does a good job of mitigating their risk by the size of their portfolio. So they have a large portfolio. So for example, when Lehman Brothers, we all know what happened in 2008, '09?
Eight.
Eight, yeah. Lehman Brothers, they, LGIP just decided to amortize that loss over, I think it was like a 24-month period. So they just lowered our rate as they amortized that loss off rather than having a large loss at one time. Some of the other pools, for example, Florida, they lost 2.1 billion, if it's 31 billion portfolio in 2007. They had to run on the bank, which caused them to completely freeze any withdrawals. So that limits your liquidity. Connecticut, Maine, Orange County, and Montana, they collectively held close to 1 billion in defaulted investments and recoveries to those municipalities invested in there. It was about 60 cents on the dollar. Okay, so liquidity is crucial. And we all want to be able to pay our bills. We all want to be able to make payroll. So what I do is create what I call a bond ladder or maturity ladder. And so your rungs, you can see them as your maturity date. So I need something to mature every month or I need something to mature when I have debt payments or whatnot. And then the distance of the rungs is basically, you know, if you do payroll every two weeks, you may want to have a maturity every two weeks. Or if you just want to have it at a month, you know, once a month and covers everything, or whatever you, as the treasurer, decides to do. And in the material, you want to make sure you're diversified within the legal guidelines of the state. You know, US Treasuries, a little bit of debt's okay as long as it's, you know, not derivative-based debt. You know, I have, you know, better or stronger rated debt and some munis that are local. You know, I'm Jackson County, so I will, you know, buy some of City of Ashland's municipal debt.
So do you personally go out and buy this, or?
I use a broker.
Okay.
Actually, I use multiple brokers. I have four brokers that I use regularly. And I will, when I have money to invest, I will, you know, put out an email saying, I got 2 million to put out. They send me their best and I look at it and decide where I'm going to go, where it fits in my ladder and in my diversification.
Do you do mostly bonds?
I do mostly bonds. I have a lot of bonds. I'm about 30% corporates, just to get a little bit better yield. And then munis, I have a couple of CDs at a local bank.
Do you do long-term bonds or short-term?
I do, I can go out to five years because we have a pretty large rainy day fund that can be invested. So I, I keep my liquidity. I keep my ladder so that I only have between five and six out in that five-year bucket and then it tapers down. Okay, so the last objective of GFOAs is yield and it's the last priority of any investment portfolio. You should never chase yield. So you want to make sure that after legality, your investment portfolio is safe. The higher the risk is, the higher the yield. Basic economics there. So you make sure that investments are a good fit for your ladder and that government guaranteed bonds, they provide timely coupons, so you know you're getting those semi-annual coupons, you know, and those interest payments are going to come in. And then to put in some high-quality corporates can help you pick up some yield. So if you want to get started in doing a bond portfolio, you need to determine what your liquidity is. What is your appetite for putting anything out that's not immediately liquid? Do you need all 10 million dollars of the road fund in a easily accessible fund? Or can you put it out a year or two? Or I guess you can only go out 18 months, a year. You want to make sure that you work with qualified broker. Debbie knows. We get calls from all kinds of people. There'll be people from Florida calling us, people from New Jersey calling us. Everybody wants a little bit of the county's portfolio. And it's, it's critical to find someone who is, you know, a well-established firm, but also is very, very familiar with the ORS's, the statutes that govern what we can and cannot invest in. There will be, I have, I have brokers showing me investments and I'll just throw back the ORS and then I'll say, I can't even invest in that so I don't, I don't know why you're, you're trying to show that to me. So you want to make sure that they have a lot of experience with Oregon. And you pull up FINRA reports, they'll give you the information on any broker that you may want to work with, if they've had any problems in the past, if they've had any failed trades, anybody's done a complaint against them, and check references. So I did bring with me Nolan from Piper Jaffray and I just, I'm recommending, you know, you can choose any broker that you want if you decide to go into the investing world. Piper Jaffray is a national firm, but they have a very large, they have a good Oregon office in Portland and they're extremely familiar with Oregon statutes. And they've been one of my go-to people for the last eight years. I think, unless you have questions for me, Nolan was going to come up. Yes?
Madam Chair, thank you. Well, thanks to Jackson County for letting you come over and spend time with our treasurer and our department and the work you're doing. And thanks to the commissioners there. Thanks to Administrator Jordan.
Yes.
Been very willing to help us on a variety of ways. And yes, yourself. So in talking to the Jackson County Commissioners, I give them a bad time about adopting Curry County. One of them recently said, do your job, you might have to adopt us someday. So we got big, big pictures here. So thank you again. And what is the reserve that Jackson County has now? That has been a pretty impressive.
Our rainy day fund?
Yes.
It's approximately 52 million dollars.
52 million. Thank you very much. Congrats on that.
Oh, thank, that's Commissioner Jordan, or Administrator Jordan. Just gave my boss a raise or a promotion.
So is that a road fund?
Well, that's a good question. He's an amazing administrator.
Well, you get credit too, I'm sure. Thank you.
So is that your road fund? Or is that just like a contingency fund for the carryover? Okay. Of course, what's your total budget?
360 million.
Okay, that explains a lot.
The fact that you have a reserve and have maintained that is really the envy of a good portion of the state. Well done.
Thank you. Nolan?
Good morning commissioners. Good morning, everyone else here.
Do you want to state your name?
Oh, I certainly will. Yeah. Nolan Farr with Piper Jaffray out of Portland. Brief presentation, I'll try to keep it under 45 minutes, is that okay? Teasing. Unless, so, let me see, make sure I get this figured out here. Questions? Okay. So I put together some slideshow here. This is kind of an introduction to our team out of Portland. And what we had done, actually, we were invited down here with Shannon a couple of months ago, a month and a half ago, just to kind of come over and introduce and talk to Debbie about investing outside of the pool, what are the strengths and weaknesses of the pool, what are the, you know, kind of pros and cons, as well as establish that relationship. Because for us, it's a huge part of our, kind of our best foot forward and what we try to accomplish. Piper Jaffray are based out of Minneapolis, but guiding principles, these are, this is kind of our quote-unquote, my compliance slideshow. So I'll just kind of flip through this stuff as we work through here. One thing that we're very much proud of is 120 years of partnership we've been established. And we just actually won the 2017 Forbes Most Trustworthy Financial Firms. There's 50 firms that are on there, two are broker-dealers. So we're very pleased to just receive, that was just announced last week, so.
So how many total firms are there?
There are 50, 50 firms on there.
50 there, but I mean total. That gives me a better idea. I mean, if there's like 60 firms.
Broker-dealer-wise, I would say 300.
300, okay.
Yeah, so for us to make the top two for that size would be, is a pretty honorable mention. So our group is very much focused not only on, is on public entities, but we also work with hospitals, corporations, and then also endowments, foundations. So we're very much diversified across the platform. But our focus, our team's focus is public entities. We work with Oregon, Washington, Idaho, Montana, and Alaska. So we're pretty well-spread out. But, but there's three of us collectively. And then the, collectively between the, between the three of us, there's over 55 years with Piper Jaffray. So we've got a.
So the three of you just work in with public entities? And, okay.
Correct. Yep, so we sit right next to each other on a trading floor in Portland. And, and so we've got our, we're in East Coast hours, so we're in at 5:00 and stay typically till about 3:00 o'clock. And, and by the time, you know, so we do, we do a lot of our work in the morning, but before Shannon gets in, she'll have a couple of emails waiting from us to kind of give her a summary on the market where we're seeing some value, some concerns. And that way she can kind of go about her day, decide it's a good day to invest or continue to just berate us. Teasing. So our investment process, we very much, our, you know, our job is to, again, as we get in early, is to identify and understand the parameters of what we're looking for. So for example, we have, we know that we have a bunch of Oregon public entities that specifically are looking for the triple A rated inside of 18 months within the settlement date restraining, restraining orders so that we have a collective understanding and presentation for that particular group that goes out every morning so that there's nothing that they're seeing that is potentially, that they couldn't invest in. The cost of our services, how we're paid, is home loan, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, those debt issuers actually will compensate us as distributors of their debt, much like a bank will pay a CD to, you know, a concession is built into that distribution. Or there's a bid-ask spread. So one side is what a desk is willing to buy a bond at and then where we can sell it is built in there. So very.
So you have no commission?
Correct.
Okay, direct commission.
So there's no fees, there's no account management fees. There's, it's all built into the transactions itself. Questions on that before I?
So do we pay a premium for our bonds or stocks?
No, no.
It would be whatever's listed on the exchange.
Correct, exactly. So there's no, like I said, no, no wrap account fee. There's no, no management fee.
Okay.
Again, all of those things are built into the, into the transaction itself, which keeps it pretty clean. So our focus, US Treasuries, government agencies, municipal obligations, taxable, corporate debt securities as well. And just kind of a, an understanding, so just from that top line, the government, US Treasuries and so on and so forth, our trading desk alone did over 500 billion last year in terms of just treasury note transactions. So we're, it's a very, very large, or a very large market, but we're definitely, you know, a big player of that. So summary of our team here. Again, pretty proud to say that, you know, over 50 years with just Piper Jaffray. Just kind of scoot through here. Here's Greg. He came down here with me last time, but he had to be on the desk today. Here's me. This is all on a slideshow, you can.
I caught all that.
Yeah, you caught all that. But here are a couple of our references. Again, we are, we're, we're all throughout, you know. Okay, oh yeah, I forgot to cover, we mentioned, we also cover Hawaii as well. But a lot of school districts is as a part of that. So Piper Jaffray is a firm. Sorry, I'm trying to keep things consolidated here. Disclaimer, again, the compliance side of it. But here's what we put together kind of for a road fund. And this is kind of where I'd like to focus on for the remaining 30 minutes. Is essentially, this was the laddered portfolio that we had, that Shannon had mentioned, which was assuming that you are in need of these funds on a basically, on essentially, on a monthly basis, starting in January. So I'm going to kind of walk over here. But this is kind of the items that, here's your maturity date, coupon date. Here's your issuer. Put this settlement date, here's a par amount. And then as you kind of scroll over here, some of these are callable. Some of these issuers have essentially, when they're callable, it's just like their ability to refinance the debt and issue it at a lower, lower level. Days of maturity, here's your yield, yield to call, and then the credit rating. The credit rating is where I think we, the whole point and premise of discussing moving outside of the LGIP with something like a road fund, which is, the LGIP currently is yielding 1.3%. But under a new treasurer and understanding that the state of Washington's pool is paying 65 basis points, Montana's paying 60, Alaska's paying 25 basis points, and California is paying 47 basis points. It's very likely that there's going to be some amendments there. However, if not, the bonds that you're investing in all carry that credit rating, that triple A credit rating of liquidity. And so with that in mind is where, whereas the majority of your portfolio is in, you know, 95% of this portfolio is in US Treasuries and agencies, the LGIP has 12% exposure. So however, in a position like this where we're able to ladder it out 18 months, we're able to accomplish just under 1.285%. Again, with weighted average maturity of 1.2 years, we, 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 we throw all the formulas in there to make a little more. And we can tweak things as we need to. And we can drop names off of here. So you can see where a JP Morgan Chase, which is, has a better rating than Bank of America or Citigroup, still has a pretty attractive yield at 1.593%. Westpac, also a great name. But those are all the, those are any of the potentially corporate names that we're putting in there to potentially boost the weighted average, weighted average yield, which is down here, this 1.285%. You can also get a little bit better yield if you are willing to tab that callable feature on some of your callable bonds. So a Fannie Mae down here, this, we'll talk, work on the bottom here. This one here, which is currently callable, but you're almost able to get, you know, 1.3% on a yield to maturity basis. And a 6.58% if they do call that early. Because you're buying it at a discount, they'll pay you par for those bonds. So again, this is essentially what we would propose that the board considers or propose that Debbie considers for a portion of the funds. But it's also something that, you know, gives you some perspective of, A, what is really out there in terms of market rates? And to understand that 1.3% on overnight liquidity, you should ask yourself, how are they accomplishing that? And I think that with a breakdown of understanding what the underlying assets are, it's for us, and again, the pool may, we, we work cohesively with, with the pool. But knowing that those, that the majority of those assets, most taxpayers would not be comfortable having their deposits held in those, in those investments. Especially the asset-backed side of it. Which, that's actually, that percentage was as high as, up as 15% of their portfolio, of the LGIP. You'll see none of that here. You know, and, and so that's where, again. You know, and, and so that's where, again, we just have some concerns.
No, you can fool them though with, that's the first time I've ever seen an acronym for Fannie Mae.
Right, right. Yeah, so Fannie Mae, but again, this is where we've got the implicit government guarantee, so you have, that is, the US Treasury rating is AAA, AA+ by S&amp;P, and so, you know, versus, versus the, you know, Toyota auto loans, Cormax, and so on and so forth, which, you know, again, if you're following that market, the asset-backed market, that's where they're projecting some serious bubbles, is within the auto...
Right.
Auto, auto loan, subprime especially. So, again, with regards to the, you know, justification or the, the questioning, why would you go out, step outside the pool, outside of the pool, we can even turn down the credit risk exposure here, now you might sacrifice some of the yield, but we can set this up so that on a monthly basis, you've got essentially a million that's coming due, and we would come to Debbie and say, okay, you know, a few days before the maturity, Debbie, we've got this home loan that's coming due, do you want to reinvest that million, or do you want to hold it back for a project that Doug has? And so, she can say, no, we can put it back out to the end of the ladder, so we would just put it right out to November of 18, and, and so that way we can keep, you know, basically navigate kind of the interest rate environment that we're currently in, and take advantage of, of, of those rates that are potentially, potentially a little bit further out, but again, this is only going out 18 months, which is well within, well within the, you know, legal restrictions of the state. Now, you could go to the board and request to go out as far as five years, which Shannon has, but again, under the, under the 18-month parameters, we're almost able to, to beat the pool, so, at a very, very much improved overall credit rating in the portfolio.
So they're paying 1.3, and it looks like you're paying 1.28, so a little bit less?
A little bit less, yep, yeah. And, and so, again, maybe for a portion of the funds, or all the funds, whichever you're most comfortable with, we're in support of, of some, especially some diversification, so. Shannon, how, what percentage of your portfolio do you have in the pool?
I keep less than a million dollars in the pool, out of a $180 million portfolio.
So how long have you done that?
For about the last two years.
Okay.
I, you know, part of it is just being able to do my own diversity.
Oh, that's right, you have to be up here.
Okay, I have less than a million dollars in the pool, out of a $180 million portfolio, been doing that for about two years, mostly just because of that uncertainty of the pool, and I do have the advantage of being able, you know, I have enough funds, I can diversify on my own, and get the yield that I need.
So you're making these decisions, these investment decisions, on a daily basis?
Pretty much.
Is that kind of scary for you, or?
Not really.
Oh, okay.
So, but I also have a master's...
That's a pretty big responsibility.
I also have a master's degree in finance, so.
Oh, okay, that helps.
And a good team that supports me.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, good.
No, I do, your brokers are key, and finding the right brokers are key, and I've gone through a few, and I've, you know, I have a lot of people calling me daily, trying to get on my list, and, and you have to screen them, and you, you have to make sure that you're working with someone who, who knows what they're doing in the state of Oregon.
Yeah, I would think that would be key.
Because other people can show you things all day long, and you realize you're not even legally allowed to, to buy them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Another question?
You might know this, not to put you on the spot, but I think there's five or six other counties, excuse me, yes, counties in the state that have road fund reserves, are you working with, by chance, some of those other counties?
If you, yes, so we work with every, we work with every county.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, and then, not only on that side, so this is the investment side, but also our firm has, has got a pretty good hand in the debt issuing side, so a lot of, you know, like I said, those school districts, Portland Public Schools, and so on and so forth, so when Portland Public Schools comes out and they issue 790 million, that will come through our trading desk, and some of that will be taxable, of which we show to Shannon, first off, because she is already a part of our, you know, client base, so she kind of gets first come, first served on, on those new issued taxable deals, as well as new issued deals that come through home loan, or Freddie Mac, which we print pretty frequently with them, again, even just last week alone was almost 300 million with just Freddie Mac off of our trading floor, so we're, we're very active, but, yeah. What else am I missing? Any other questions? Debbie, anything that I didn't touch on?
No, I think you didn't fill it out.
Okay, and under time, too.
Okay, you did better than 30 minutes, congratulations.
Yes.
Are there any comments from the public?
Oh, yeah, you might want to do this one here, and this is on the second session, Madam Chair.
Okay. Byron...
Ryan Grumman.
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 Grand Gromman.
My writing is not... Yes, I wonder if you could comment on how you would protect the county against the interest rate changes that are coming up? We're looking at two changes this year, and bonds typically suffer badly when you get interest rate changes.
That's a spectacular question, and I think that the answer to that is institutional access to a market, and this is a prime example of, through our access to the institutional market, these are reflective of today's rates, or what was going on on the 24th of May. And so, and also, there's a couple different strategies that we employ, we've got, we have our, a strategy desk that is kind of identifying steepness of the slope of the curve, which is where we spend a tremendous amount of time on, to identify areas that might be a value add, but also through different strategies, so a barbell strategy, for example, is one of the most common ones, which is where you put, you know, a fair amount of your, portions of your investments on the short end, and then you also lock in on the long end, and that is supposed to weather the interest rate environment. Just from a 30,000-foot perspective, we anticipate two more rate hikes this year alone, and then for things to kind of taper off from there. Where we are seeing, where we are focused on, or a little bit concerned, is the slope of the curve right now, it's very flat, once you get out past three and a half, four years, and by flat, I mean that from a, so we're able to accomplish 1.28 with an 18, 1.2-year average duration, the 10-year Treasury note is yielding 2.28 today. So, that gives you some perspective of what's the risk-reward of going out further, or adding duration, where we would suggest, actually, let's not, let's just keep things much, much closer, and, and we can even, we can throw in some floating rate positions that also will, will track, will track and trace with those, those rising rates.
Are there a few bond discounts already in these numbers?
Correct, correct, yep.
Well, and I think it's important to note for the public that long-term bonds are much more risky than the, the short-term, so.
Right, right, so in the grand scheme of things, these are very much, these, yeah, this, and these also have a lot of the Fed rate hikes priced into them, is the term that you'll hear us say, and so, this is indicative of what the market is seeing and anticipating two more rate hikes this year, so hence they are actually pretty attractive yields in the grand scheme of things. For us, it's, I have not seen, this has been eight years since we've been able to see anything that's attractive inside of three years, so.
So these may be actually showing...
You need to come up. Got to get you on the microphone.
I understand, is then the actual price of these may be showing like a 2% because of the present discount.
Correct, or the, so you'll buy them either at a premium or at a discount. So for example, this, a great one, be that Fannie Mae, the 110, that we looked at down here, so the, the reason why we're able to accomplish that, or potentially, if they do call it early, 6.58, is because you're buying it at such a discount for what that 110 coupon is for October of 2018, where we could potentially get 130 on the coupon, but we can play that strategy when hoping that they do call it early, and refinance it, and we can take a nice, nice, nice gain in terms of yields.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you Debbie for bringing them and giving us a little bit of education here.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we introduce our Assistant Counsel?
Oh, sure, do you want to introduce yourself?
Did I just put you on the spot? I didn't mean...
You just put me on the spot. Hello, my name is Shala Kudlock with the Carlton Law Offices located up in Banden, and I am the Assistant County Counsel, who helps out Mr. Huddle when he is otherwise unavailable.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for being here today. One, one more thing, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, we have some handouts here, we have a Veterans Appreciation Celebration on July 1st, McVay's Rock State Park in Brookings, guaranteed to be a lot of fun, pass the word if you would, please, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, next we have ODOT, Mr. Neville? And it looks like we have someone else, so maybe you could introduce...
Sure, I'll let Mark tell you this. Uh, my name's Mark Hussleman, I'm the ODOT Area Manager, I oversee all construction projects in, on the state highway system in Coos Creek and Douglas County.
Okay.
And Darren Neval, District 7 Manager, so I, I manage the maintenance and operations of all the highways in, for ODOT in Douglas, Coos and Coos.
Okay, I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
You're fine.
Neval, okay.
Yes, that's a common, common issue, so. So, thanks for inviting us, we've been talking about getting down here and, and meeting you guys, and just sharing some things around transportation, and, and giving you guys a chance to ask us some questions, and so, kind of first, we thought we'd just share a little bit about Mark and I's role, and we, and so really, we're, if you have any transportation issues in, in this area, come to us, we'll figure out who, who works the issue, if you come to us, and so, please feel free to do that, and so, and Cork has done that, and we work a lot with Doug, Doug over here, so, I believe we sent down some brochures on kind of some of the current projects, and I'll let Mark maybe talk through some of those. So, it's on there?
Keep going.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, what we have here is just a little, kind of a hard area that both Darren and I cover, and kind of see here on this scene, on screen, you've got the projects, the type of projects, so preservation, preservation projects is kind of a gold color, those are basically an overlay-type project, two inches to four inches, that kind of a project, it's really like preserving the system. The light blue is bridge projects that are in the area, and those could include deck overlays or replacements, but again, they target where those projects are, and then on the next sheet, you'll have them actually identified in there, you can kind of see what projects you have. You also have the operations projects on there, which are essentially taking care of the system signals, those kinds of things, then you have culverts, culverts are a big deal, and safety, and enhanced projects. So these are just all the projects that come in between 2018 and 2021, so just kind of give you an idea of what we've got in the area.
We know what to avoid, right?
Yes. I don't know if you will be able to avoid that. Any questions on those?
When is that Sixus One starting up?
Well, I'll let Mark talk about that. It's supposed to be this summer, or next summer, is that right? Next summer. 2019.
Okay, well, good.
Yeah, 2019. That project is the, is essentially a paving press job, as I talked about, just being a preservation job, we're going to go in and pave that section of road, entire section with a resurfacing, we have restriped the section in Port Orford, Darren's maintenance crews did that, the, the city wanted to take a look at, you know, doing some, what we call traffic calming, and, and making it so it's not like a freeway going through Port Orford, and I drove through it today, it's the first time I've drove, driven through it, and I mentioned to Darren that it actually does make me feel like I have to go slower, so I think it's, it's effective on, and we'll see how it goes, we're coordinating that with the city, and we'll make a decision sometime this fall on whether, when we do the overlay, that we'll permanently strip it that way, so, it's kind of a test, test case. Have you guys, any feedback from, from you guys going through there, or?
You know, we have, if I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
We have several important people, this gentleman right here lives in Port Orford.
All right.
Our District Attorney, Everett Dial, lives in Port Orford, drives every day, our County Counsel, John Huddle, drives every day, Ken Duquet is the Executive Director of Coos Community Health, our Planning Director, Carolyn Johnson, who lives in Port Orford, so we get daily reports, and, and I'm sorry, but Brookings gets left out of the equation, so.
Well, we have our problems, too.
Yeah, if you, if you got feedback, we're taking that, we're collecting that, and we'll meet with City Council this fall, and kind of make a determination whether they stay with that three-lane configuration, or go to a four-lane, back to a four-lane, I saw a hand somewhere? Oh, thumbs up, oh, okay, all right.
So...
You too, okay.
Madam Chair?
That's what we've been hearing so far, and so.
If I may, I want to acknowledge a couple people in the audience, Beau Schindler, I've known for 45 years, co-founder of Freeman Marine, employed hundreds of people over the years, has been incredible for Coos Creek County, has been tremendous for the state of Oregon, and sent products all over the world, and he says he's retired now, but I'm not buying it, and he's here today, and I, I didn't know, Beau, if you wanted to visit, or, or have a, I don't mean to put you on the spot either, it doesn't have to be now, but I, I didn't know if you were completed, and I just didn't want to lose the chance.
Well, we got a few other things we can share.
Okay, so we're gonna, if we may.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that's Port Orford project, I think we had a couple others. You've got the Thomas Creek Bridge, and Reinhardt Creek Bridge, and both those jobs are painting projects, and we're painting the structure below the, the bridge deck itself, and so those are going, ongoing, it feels like we've been working on Reinhardt and Thomas Creek for a couple years, we have, but they're different projects, the bridge railing projects were complete, and a deck overlay, and now we're taking, now we're looking at the superstructure below, or the structure below, and painting that. In this kind of environment, painting has to happen fairly routine, and that's, I think the last time we painted Thomas Creek was, I want to say, late 90s, and so it's about, about 20 years, we got to be back on painting, so, both those projects will take place. Reinhardt is currently under construction right now, they've already had a couple moves with their containment structures, so they're doing, progressing fairly well, once we're done with Reinhardt, they'll move down to Thomas Creek. So those were the, the projects that we got currently in, in the area, a few other things just going on, on the maintenance and operations, of course, those that have drive the highway, we've had a, a busy winter this year, and the roads have taken a beating, we are, we do have big crews coming in the next two weeks, to do a bunch of paving along 101, but I, just driving down, I see the slides are, we just paved some areas, and I see they're moving again, so they have a really slow down.
It's better than it was, though.
Good, well, we're, we're trying to get those in good shape for the summer, and we'll keep working on that. We did get about a million dollars' worth of federal funds from the, the emergency declaration this, this winter, and most of that money will go towards just kind of resurfacing those, the federal government won't fix most of our slides in this area along 101, because they're too big, they'll just pay to kind of repair them, that's why we have names for them, and not, we've never been able to fix them, is they're just, they're too big, a lot of these, so, let's see, and then, couple things that are going on, been working with John down in Harbor area, we're struggling down there with what to do down there, we're just having lots of crashes in that area from Benham down to McVay, and, and, and so we're looking at a short-term fix of possibly reducing one of those lanes, and adding a left, center turn lane, and so, you'll hear more of that through the summer, we're exploring that idea, and so, we'll, we'll probably do some type of open house down there to get some input on that, because there is some trade-offs to doing that. We did look at what, actually, adding a lane and pushing folks out onto the existing shoulder, but our pavement is... But our pavement is not thick enough through there, and it would just, it'd fall apart. And so, we're going to have to, if we're going to do a short-term fix with just a striping change, we'd have to reduce a lane. And so, like to get some feedback on that, if that's a direction we'd like to all go or not. And so that's, that'll be coming this summer and this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then, a couple other things down there. I guess the last one we had, last few years, we've been working on a culvert that failed in the Harbor area. We're pretty much done with that. We've got a couple things left. There's a connection between the shopping center and our pipe that we need to align this spring, so that'll happen. And then we need to work with Doug to kind of finalize the outfall of that, make sure that's all stable and we're good with that. And then at the end, we'd like to kind of land, work with Doug and you guys to make sure we're clear on who's responsible for what. There's kind of three owners of that pipe through there.
It's true.
And we don't know, and when it failed, it was right in that gray area in my mind on kind of who's, who's that was. Luckily, we got federal reimbursement, so we took that on and did that. But I think, I think making it clear would help us all when we nail that down.
Our Road Master is a pretty tough negotiator.
I know he is. I know he is. Yep.
He has to be.
Yes. And then the last two things I had was just the planning, our planning. We've got two planning studies going on right now. One is on the 101 from Chetco River Bridge down to California border. That's getting finalized this, sometime this summer. And then later this summer into fall, we're going to be kicking off a project that will look at bike and pedestrian facilities along the whole 101 corridor from Washington to California. And so you'll hear more about that as, over the next year.
Sounds good. Okay, I think we had one public comment. John Brazil, do you want to come up?
I'm John Brazil, resident of Harbor, Oregon. Also, the Fire Chief for Harbor Rural Fire Protection District. Commissioner News, thank you very much for allowing me this time. I don't know if this works up here. Yeah, I guess it does. Can I?
The mouse is super sensitive. We haven't got that remedy yet.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the minimize. Where's the minimize?
Up at the top in the middle. See the little hand? Right next to the hand, to the right of the hand.
That one?
Yeah, that looks like mine is. There you go.
No, I wanted to minimize that here. Let me, let me try to do this. Darn. This might be out here. Okay.
Oh, these are all the accidents.
What I do want to talk about, and I got a couple notes here. As a fire agency, we don't only do fire, right? And it's kind of a reminder to everybody. Our business is life, and safety is our main interest. And prevention of loss of life and safety and property is our main goal. And that's what your fire agencies attempt to do. Addressing ODOT's issues, working with ODOT and the community with support from the BOC to minimize motor vehicle accidents, motor vehicle crashes, MBAs or MBCs, however you'd like to talk to it. To reduce the occurrences of those types of things happening, which is one of my secondary or primary main interests, is to reduce the exposure and protection for firefighter safety. Safety and life, again, is a main objective here. As you know, the response from ODOT to traffic accidents is somewhat delayed in the South County. And traffic accidents, and I'm going to just throw a couple up here. These things occur not always on Highway 101, as this one here indicates.
That had to be somebody drunk, though.
This is at the port of Brookings Harbor.
Yeah, I could see.
But this is on 101. This is on Highway 101. This is on Highway 101. This occurrence is on Highway 101. These are only some of the accidents that occur in the Harbor Fire District. Chetco River Bridge to the California line. This is Highway 101, Highway 101. Some of these are maybe considered not too serious. But each one of these occurrences has the potential of creating a secondary traffic accident. Somebody in that car right there, it was probably not their best day. It delays commerce. It requires additional resources that could be doing other things to respond to these things. Your volunteer firefighters respond to most of these calls. I believe maybe in your package, you have a list of the responses that Harbor Fire responded to in the last couple of years. Working with ODOT, we're trying to put our databases kind of together. What the state has reported as traffic accidents doesn't necessarily correspond with the responses that we have made. And we're trying to get a better handle on that.
So John, let me interrupt you for just a second. On ODOT being informed, does it have to be of a certain magnitude in order for them to be informed, or?
Generally, the basic process is, is that if there is a traffic accident, there's a risk of life and safety. If it's reported, responding agencies respond. OSP responds, ODOT's notified because of a traffic condition. Your volunteer fire departments respond, medical assists respond. In some cases, if we happen to have other law enforcement in the area, they may respond. And at that point, it might be a $10 damage. It might be a $300,000 damage. We don't know. Generally, any accident, as all of you that may hold the current driver's license in the state of Oregon know the responsibility, if it's $1,500 or more worth of damage, it shall be reported. And ODOT should, in the process, receive that report.
I interrupt, John. That's how we get our, that's our data.
The $1,500 or more, okay.
And so that's why John's got a lot more crashed out than we-
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
But for the most part, in today's environment, $1,500 damage on a vehicle-
That's nothing.
It's not a whole lot. So there should be a lot of reports that go forward. Just bore you a little bit more. This here is a little windshield damage, right? That's because a pedestrian lost their life in this case. That's what created the windshield damage, was a pedestrian versus auto. That's, sorry, that shouldn't have been in there. That's another one off of 101. This is Highway 101. That one got off of the highway.
Must have been drunk.
This is an OSP trooper on Highway 101. Parked alongside a Highway 101 roadway with his lights on, and somebody run into him. This officer did sustain some injury and was off of duty for a short period of time. He was a great guy, but you know, he decided to move on to a different place in the state. Off of Highway 101, wasn't preventing any traffic problem in that case. Roadway was clear. Not good day. This individual here really did not have a good day. This is what your volunteer firefighters respond to. And these are things that we want to try to prevent. Through planning and implementation is how we can avoid some of these things. That's a Highway 101 incident. Sorry for the configuration. That might look a little better. Not a good day on Highway 101. All right, how'd this happen? Someone was attempting to make a left-hand turn off of Highway 101 without a turn lane in the middle. And somebody coming from the back decided that they didn't want to slow down. Not a good day on Highway 101. Some are minor. This person here did have a neck injury and sustained back injury. Anyway, the point being that prevention is a criteria that we in the fire service try to be involved with. And working with ODOT over the years and on the implementation of different planning on, I'm concerned with our fire district because those are the people that I directly support. We have a couple different areas down there, and as ODOT is indicating, they are still looking at maybe doing some restriping. We're talking about just putting paint on the road to change some of the environment that may prevent some of these cases, some of the common cases that we have. We do want to get our data together to better support ODOT in a planning process. They spend millions and millions of dollars keeping our roadways on the coast here where we can deliver commerce and that we can drive down the roadways safely. But then, on the other hand, we could spend a few hundred thousand dollars and I think, and prevent a lot of motor vehicle accidents in our district in Harbor. And I would like the BOC to help support the fact of trying to minimize the accident potential. I myself, personally, I'll be honest with you, if I had to drive 10 miles an hour slower to get from Harbor to Gold Beach because of roughness of the road, I would be willing to give that part up to know that when I was going to pull either on or off the roadway, I would have a design that would be more safe and help prevent someone having a bad day. So, in conclusion, if I, I'm looking at my notes right now. We understand that OSP is a primary organization and that has the responsibility. But a lot of times, their response to that area is questionable. Our volunteer firefighters do respond to try to protect that life and safety issue. The longer that they are out there on the roadway to minimize a secondary accident, take care of the initial cause, awaiting for OSP to show up. And ODOT does have traffic management responsibilities. They got really nice trucks, flashing signs, lots of cones, all of that. But generally, it's a 45-minute to an hour response. We, or myself, really hesitate in holding our volunteers out in that environment for an extended period of time. So we implement our procedure, secure the scene, make it safe, continue traffic management, keep commerce moving, clear the roadway in a timely manner as quickly as we can be able to do that. Staying in the guidelines of the ORSs. We do understand the BOC isn't in real support of a mutual aid agreement with the fire departments. But that would assist us, and I'm going to continue with that endeavor. By working together as a team and understanding the inner workings and responsibilities, we want to, and we're restricted from doing it. I'm not saying you don't want to. These folks want to. But the planning, the implementation, and the buy-in to have these things happen, I think everyone needs to work together in having that. With the input of the BOC, or support of the BOC, and the input of our community, our responding emergency service, public safety agencies, and ODOT, I think we're going to be successful in the future. And I want us to all continue along that line. I am hoping that the BOC is in support of providing support along public safety issues within Coos Creek County.
So what support, specific support are you asking of us? A letter of support, or?
For the BOC to continue to support their agencies, be it the Sheriff Department, Road Department, and working in conjunction with ODOT on responses, assisting. Yeah, it's, I think that would be another meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Brazil, you mentioned the board's not in favor of mutual aid agreements. I think you meant the past board, because Commissioner Gold, I've only been here four months, so-
Well, I'm not, I'm speaking agency, not personally.
But we are in the position to have you come back and present those agreements. And the information you brought and presented today is terrific. I have several questions, if I may. Clarification, it looks like in three years, 25 accidents a year. So that's three or four, what, two or three a month? Is that, does that sound correct?
In the Harbor Fire District, in the Harbor Fire District, we run about 32 to 38 accidents a year.
Okay.
Motor vehicle pipe accidents.
Wasn't that close. In, in meeting the Brookings people and campaigning, boy, this is one thing I did here. So I was glad to hear Mr. Neval bring up the issue in Harbor. And it is, it really is a concern that people have. And I guess I just want to kind of open up to dialogue here with, with the requirements and the bike path portion. I wonder if that'll slow people down, or if it'll add, you know, more, more difficulty for that, that part of, you know, and I, and too, these are all from the Harbor Bridge, correct, to the border? Do I have that accurate?
Yeah, the list that I had, I think, also provided to you was just on Highway 101 between-
Yes.
In the Harbor Fire District, from the Chetco Bridge, from the Chetco Bridge south.
Okay.
And during the previous community-
What do we call them? Open house?
Open houses. There, there's information that is provided, and ODOT does collect that stuff. And what I do, as the Fire Chief for the Harbor Fire District, is I try to keep some of that in, in the pipe and try to keep it going. We have, we have a few different traffic design issues there in Harbor that we have ODOT looking at that may enhance the lessening of accidents happening. And that, you know, that's kind of what our main goal is. So in the design criteria, be it in the walkways or bypass, there's data that supports if that's a good idea or not a good idea.
Can you weigh in on that? Because I don't-
Yeah, so the, the, the long-term plan will include bike lanes and sidewalks up to, I think it's Benham. And then from there out, will be nice wide shoulders. That's the long-term plan. Short-term, what we're really looking at, we would not reduce the shoulder width at all. What we would do is either take a north or southbound lane away and turn that into a two-way turn lane.
So how would you determine which direction? By doing some traffic flow?
Yeah, so we're doing some traffic flow counts, and we want to get some input from folks too, just on what that looks like.
You said open house?
Yeah, we'll do an open house at some point. And like John said, when we had the last open house, we heard loud and clear. That's the biggest thing that they really feel would help down there, is to get that turn lane. And to do that, it's, it's $2 to $5 million to add capacity, to widen that and strengthen those shoulders and do that.
Oh, so there's two lanes going both directions?
So you have two lanes plus the turn lane. It's $2 to $5 million. That's not something that we're going to come up with right away. And so that's why we're starting to explore this idea of adding that safety feature. But it does- we're starting to explore this idea of, of adding that safety feature, but it does reduce a little bit of capacity.
Kind of like what they did south of Nor, or excuse me.
Correct, in California.
California?
Yep, yep.
And my input on that is, if we can, since I did the study as far as the strength of the roadway to maintain four lanes, two lanes in each direction in that area, and that's not capable of that right now, is that my suggestion is, let's restripe it and take it to one lane. It would increase the one lane about a half mile, maybe, from where it is today, two lanes each way, it might be another half mile, maybe three-quarters of a mile, that will be one lane instead of two in each direction. And my personal feeling is another three-quarters of a mile of one lane between here and Crescent City in a 20-mile run should not make that big of a difference. So you go to one lane a half mile sooner for a 20-mile stretch.
So John, I just have one question. How many of these accidents are attributed to someone trying to make a left-hand turn and maybe someone rear-ending them, or whatever? Are most of the accidents for that reason?
I would say, I can go through there and do that, but I would say probably about 42% or better.
Okay, and then some of them were just maybe drunks or whatever?
Some are drunk, some are illegal, entering the roadway not safely, but I would say probably better than 40% of these are left-turn rear-end accidents.
So you could probably eliminate possibly 40% of your accidents by putting that turning lane in there.
Down in that area, I would say of all of these here, the specific area we're talking about, probably, yeah, 25 to 30%.
Yeah, and that is a bad area, I'd have to agree.
Yeah. The other thing that, working with ODOT, and I'm learning, and this, I'm taking up way too much time here, but the speed and the traffic, they did assist us in one situation just south of Benham Lane that I asked, and they extended the speed limit down another quarter of a mile. In other words, going from 45 to 55, you've got to drive another quarter of a mile at 45 before you go to 55, which has made an intersection a whole lot safer. Myself personally, I would think that from the Chetco Bridge even to Benham, probably should stay at maybe 35, like coming out of the city of Brookings, when you get to the Dairy Queen or Oak Street, it goes to 35. I would like to see 35 all the way to Benham before it went up to 45 or 55. But once speed limits are established, there's really funny criteria that they, their guideline is to lower the speed limit, is, has to collect data that shows that traffic requires the speed limit to be lowered. If the average speed of people driving through there is 30 or 35, and the speed limit's 45, they will lower the speed limit. But if everybody keeps driving through there at 55, they're going to keep the speed limit signs at 45.
I'm glad you're explaining it.
Well, you know, John, that'll probably happen, because we've got lots of geezers down that way, so.
So if the majority of the people keep driving fast, the guidelines would say to up, up the speed limit, not lower. So it's kind of, kind of interesting, John. That's a public education issue.
Okay, well, we appreciate your input and.
Excuse me?
Okay, here's another comment.
I was just going to say, we're not in any hurry here, this is great information. You came all the way from Roseburg, you spend a lot of time coming to Box, so I'm, I'm just really learning here. And something you did say, well, several things, but one thing was the response time of the state police. I think we're down to four in Curry County, now I could be wrong on that, but I think that was the last report I had. And, yeah, they're spread thin, and not just in Curry County, of course, but, and then you put in addition to that where we are with the Sheriff's Department, that is an exposed area. And you also said something that is a good challenge, and I think is very doable, and that is just bringing the communities together, and I, I think that's what we're faced with nowadays. And so we did have Bo Schindler, if, if, if we could bring him up, we stand one more there, and, and I think he has some similar issues and, and just, yeah, if, if I may, Madam Chair.
Oh, I.
You're in some good company there.
Hi, Bo Schindler. Just three things that I want to say. First, there was a time here in Curry County when the postal service used the second-class mail to fill the potholes. I don't know if you guys knew. That was between Gold Beach and Brookings. So sometimes you didn't get your mail. It's a tough, it's a tough thing here in Curry County because of all the movement. And my concern is with the Curry Hospital, we put 20 million plus into Brookings, we've got 35 million into a brand-new hospital, and the biggest market that the hospital has, the district has, is Brookings. And most of the people are moving, going to Sutter through their hospital. And part of the reason for that is the condition of the road. So there are a lot of, a lot of obstacles, and the road isn't the only one, but the road is one of them. And I noticed on your first slide that you had, you had a lot of dots, you had the preservation, you had different things you were doing, and most of those dots are clear up in the north, not in Curry County. Most of them are up in Douglas County, actually, in Coos County. I also noticed that in Curry County, in listening to the transcript here, whatever you want to call it, we have one project in Sixes River, and then we have another one that's being considered between Brookings and California. And those are both ends of it, there's nothing in between except for some bridge work. And in my experience, you have a huge obstacle that, that you look at when you look at these slides, they're huge. Huskanadeen is a big one, like you say, we'll give them names. And so you don't do anything with it because it's too big. But I guess I would ask the question, that the board would do what they can to support pushing onward with little efforts, smaller efforts, like what are you doing to get the water off of Huskanadeen? A gallon of water is eight pounds. How many gallons of water are hitting that hillside in the rain? How many pounds are hitting it? Why does it move? It's moving because of the weight, liquefaction and the weight. And I also heard in your, in the testimony about getting these roads ready for the summer, and we do need the roads for the summer, we need them for the tourism. But we, there's 25, 24,000 people live here year-round, we need roads year-round. And the roads between Port Orford and Brookings have chronic movement. They move every winter. And sometimes they move in the middle of the night, and people can't see that they've got a drop of a foot. And I think, I know you're old enough to remember the Arizona Slide, Arizona Beach Slide.
I think that is a compliment.
Yeah. And Corin's old enough, he remembers, we lost one county commissioner or two at Arizona Beach.
One.
Where the road dropped out, because of the rain and the way that it was a downhill slope, you couldn't see the road. And the fact that the road wasn't there, that they didn't even see it. They landed in the hole, next car, same thing, they didn't see it, they landed right on top of the pancake. So when you go through that area today, that, that was a big slide the last time we had it. The slide I'm talking about where we lost the county commissioner was one before that. But you see, what you've done there, you're taking water off the hill. People know, you know what the problem is. So I guess my question is, is, is what are we doing to get the water off these other places? And is there anything that we can do in the wintertime? Like can you put a borrow pit right there? If you're going to have, if all you can do is push dirt on it and level it out, can you put a borrow pit there? Have somebody, what's the cost to have somebody there all 24 hours a day during the winter, especially when it's raining? So that you can move on it when it happens, rather than, because you know the place, you got names for them, you know where they're going to, they're going to go in the same place. What can be done about that? And, and to go back to why, why this is my concern, we need to turn, we don't need to get all those people going to Sutter. It'd be nice to turn some of them around. That's Oregon. If you're sending, you're sending your Oregon people to a California hospital, we would like to get them to come back here to Oregon Hospital. And there's others, other things that make it even, it saves them money to come back, because if you take them into your Brookings emergency room, and then they got to go to California, they got to pay another emergency room fee to get into that hospital. If they go into that emergency room down in Brookings, they come to our hospital, they already know what's going on. So they've only got one emergency room. That was all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
I have a letter here for.
Thank you so much for your presentations. Any other public comment?
Did you have anything else?
No.
No, I do have one other comment, one other thing I wanted to mention. We have a Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, and we would like to have a commissioner on that Area Commission on Transportation. We have a commissioner from Douglas County, we have a commissioner from Coos County, and since the elections have had turnover, right now we don't have a commissioner from Curry County. So at some point, we'd like to see you get to add someone to that commission. We meet every other month in Kokil.
What's the name of that commission?
Southwest Area Commission on Transportation.
Madam Chair, I'm going to volunteer for that and bring it to the board.
Are you going to bring it to the board for the next meeting?
Yes, yeah, and I have some printed here for you also.
Okay.
And, and the Curry County representation, unfortunately, the last couple of years, as I understand, has been hit and miss, and we need to be on that, and thank you for that. One more quick question?
Sure.
The $1 million, you said, comes from the federal government?
Yes.
Do you have, that's for your district, and do you have even the slightest idea how you might approach that proportionally to the different areas?
Yeah, actually, the $1 million's for Curry County.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, we got about $3.5 million through the three counties. And so the, the $1 million, most of it will go on Huskanadeen, we've got a couple things on at 80 Acres up over just south of Gold Beach here, up over the hill there, fixing those. Again, not fixing them, just kind of patching them back together.
Pretty bad spots there.
But I can't, I can't imagine what you're dealing with, and just, as, as Mr. Schindler said, just the sheer amount of water that we had this year, and the damage that does, I mean, I, it's, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, people almost say with a badge of honor, this is the most difficult, or the, the most expensive section of highway on the Oregon coast. Is that, is that accurate?
I would say it is. I don't know that for a fact, but when I drive 101, this is the, the most slides that we have up and down 101. And it is real challenging. Just a couple things, we only have 11 people in Curry County for ODOT, and so hats off to my, our crews.
They work there, absolutely.
They do a great job, I believe. We need to get more resources down there to help to do that.
Thank you.
We do run night shifts through the winter, trying to maintain those, but they are a challenge, because they can move in a heartbeat. And so I, I hear you, and we, we want to improve those slides. The challenge is, I'll give you one example, just 80 Acres, that little slide up there, $4 million to fix that. And it's 200 feet.
Yeah.
And so that's our challenge, is to put that kind of money in to fix that piece. And so that's, that's our, and, you know, the others are much bigger than that.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Schindler also mentioned the tourism aspect, and I used to work clear back in late 70s for Vicatia's campaign for governor. He was the last moderate governor we had, and just an incredible statesman, and he would spend a lot of time to come down here, and of course, I'd get a little puffy and show gratitude and all that, and he says, Corin, I want you to understand, there's less than 1/10 to 1% of the vote down there, but of the entire Oregon coast, his wife's name is Dolores, we love to come down to this section, and so that is important. And I also see, back to Mr. Schindler's emphasis here, the, the opportunity we have within our medical community and with, with an aging community, this is, it's really a neat opportunity to even hopefully bring the county together, and we see healthcare improving, and the people that I'm familiar with really are confident they can compete with Sutter healthcare in Crescent City, and we're going to, we're going to take that challenge, so. And, and the work you're doing is, is a great help. Glad to hear that we have a good portion of that $3 million for Curry County, and, and again, thanks for taking the time to come down here, and we'll look forward to hearing the notices on your open houses, and hopefully the commissioners will, I believe will step up and, and show the support that everybody needs there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time and your presentation.
All right.
And it looks like we're to the end of this workshop. Thank you all for coming.